This is. Today is Monday, July 7th, 2025. First up on our agenda is amending the master contract for public safety services. So, the council, when we considered this at the meeting last week as an addendum, we had lots of questions. So Chief Mitchell, do we want to do a recap?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President and members of the council. So before the council, it's just an amendment to a master agreement that was approved by the council back in 2024 to provide cameras within our city limits that will tie into the real-time crime center. So what's before the council now is just an amendment to add some more cameras into our footprint at the request of BPD, working with Alabama Power since they are the sole owners of all the poles that kind of aligns with us trying to maintain that support and level of visibility for the real-time crime center. I'm here to answer any questions. Leadership from Alabama Powers here and our BPD leadership is here also. If you have any questions.
Sure, I'll start with the first one. So we have a one-pager as part of the packet dated May 20th, 2025 that provides a bullet list of all of the cameras and other services that are provided as part of the contract. Is that everything in totality in that bulleted list?
Yes, sir.
New and amended? Okay, all right. Councilor Abbott?
I just wanted to ask, why do we say that this contract is for electric service when it's really for cameras and surveillance and maintenance of the equipment?
Mr. Jonathan Bowlesman will speak to that.
Turn your mic on, please.
Thank you, Mayor.
So on the actual agreement, there's a service cost and then there's the estimated regulated utility cost. The estimated regulated utility cost is the power used by the video cameras and a couple of the LPRs. The ones that are on solar do not use any power and we are not charging for power for the solar power one. Where you see the service charge, that includes the entire process of installing, maintaining the camera systems. So that includes subscriptions to the video management software, to the license plate recognition software. That is data plans for the cameras to be able to talk back to the internet to get back to the real-time crime center. And that is also including an upgraded data connection at the real-time crime center for the camera system. So it's not the power. That power usage is roughly $3,000 a month. The rest of that is the service of the actual cameras.
Okay, well, I was just looking at the contract and it says we're buying electric service and that's sort of not exactly what we're doing here.
No, so this is actually a service agreement. So it's not a leased contract. It's a service agreement and that's why it has the term service amount. It's not electric service. It just says service amount. It's because it's a service agreement.
Okay, it does say electric service, but thank you for the explanation. Then one other question. I was looking at our proposed operating budget for the police department and I probably overlooked it. It was late at night. But where is the real-time crime center? Where is the $10 million to pay for these services? Where is it in the budget?
I'm sorry. So most of the funding, if you know, this contract is over a number of years. So we're not paying all the $10 million upfront. Part of the funding has been supplemented from the grant that we received from Katie Britt, which was around $4.1 million. Last year in the FY '25 budget, we had around $1.5, $2 million that was set aside for that contract that came from the first phase. So we're making payments on this yearly. This is not just a lump sum. This is something that we're paying over the next five years.
Okay, and where is it in the budget?
So the grant, yeah, the grant is in a grant account. It's not in the proposed budget.
So no money is coming from the real-time crime center or the police department?
Not until we spend the full grant amount, then hopefully we can get another grant or we'll budget this in future fiscal years.
Well, y'all wanted to ask about that hopefully thing?
Well, it was part of our legislation. When we met with them, we'd said we would like to, we afforded another opportunity of more funding for the real-time crime center from our federal partners.
And just to add to what, Mr. President, just to add to Councilor Abbott's question to Chief Mitchell's response. We feel good about our advocacy related to engaging our federal lobbyists to continue to engage the partnership and show Senator Britt the result of this DOJ grant, knowing that there's additional resources that exist for us to go after competitive DOJ grants as well. So going to continue that process. We feel good about our position, but we will be awarded or not awarded. And if we're not awarded, the contingency will be to plan out out of our general fund.
Okay, and the locations of the cameras I know are secret, but are they going to be spread across all districts?
100%.
Because when the bad guys are trying to get away, they go places where they think the police won't look for them. So even if it's not a high-crime area, it could be an escape route for somebody who's just done something horrible.
We, the beauty of this conversation is Alabama Power and the Birmingham Police Department have gone in really, really deep into this partnership relationship as well as strategic deployment of where they should be. And that is like beyond Chad Mitchell's and his engagement on purpose to make sure this program and partnership works. But the answer is yes, it will be spread out citywide.
Good, good. And will it help us to catch the people who are now roaring through our residential neighborhoods because they can't roar around on city streets anymore?
Define roar?
Well, the ones, the people with the really loud cars and motorcycles who are hauling through the neighborhoods going 50 miles an hour.
Yeah, so that's a.
Those people.
That's a good question. The best way I can answer that is yes or no. Yes, in the future. No, not in the present. I think with the exception of what the legislators did with the exhibition driving, moving violations as of today, based on Supreme Court ruling, with the exception of a few cities within our state, can't use cameras before and or after the fact to catch. The only exception we have for camera usage is exhibition driving. So we need to continue to work with the legislators in Montgomery to change that to allow camera use to get to a point where it can be used for any moving violations. Or maybe the next moving violation beyond exhibition driving, if they don't want to expand it to all, could be speeding.
Okay, well, those people that are doing it have discovered neighborhoods because there's nobody there to catch them. And I keep on wondering why the police don't stop them just for violation of the noise ordinance because they've either removed their mufflers or they have special switches in the car that make them sound really aggressive so they can be big, important, strong men racing through neighborhoods. So they could be stopped for the noise ordinance violations if you can't stop them for speeding?
Well, that's what I can tell you.
So that is a real concern. Good afternoon, everyone. And what I've done is I've issued, I've made sure that our Deputy Chief Patrol Bureau, to your point, has issued our city ordinance larger ticket books. Right now, we're getting that added back to our mobile, which is our, I guess, electronic computer system as we do our reports and things of that nature. So we have, we're having that updated and added. So we will be writing the citations for loud noise as well as the curfew violations for our juveniles. So that goes into the same municipal code book. So I've made sure that every officer that's in patrol and on our special operations team is equipped with those larger ticket books for the city ordinances. So you will be seeing more tickets coming in. So we'll be reporting out on that as well. And the loud noise, the mufflers, as well as the loud sound systems. So that is something that we're working on.
Good, thank you. I guess I should be quiet now.
Councilor Moore, you had a question?
Yes, Mr. President. I know last council meeting, I asked the question about our own poles, us being able to just look into what that would look like concerning the pricing.
So, Councilor Moore, we did kind of look into that with BDAT on how much it would cost to like install a pole, purchase a pole. It would be rather expensive because we would still have to lean on Alabama Power to do the install because it's on our city right of ways. So we have looked at it, but I think it's less cost efficient for us to do that actual process of installing poles when they already have the poles, you know, in place that we can use.
Mr. President, to your council's point, just a note to add, he's being modest. It's cost prohibitive. We could do it, but we'll still be out of two costs now. Be out of costs for our own installation and still be out of additional costs to engage Alabama Power.
Got you. Pro Tim Alexander?
Thank you very much. I want to go back to the question I had from Tuesday. First, let me start. I'm very grateful to BPD and the utility company for coming into this public-private partnership to increase the safety in our neighborhoods. The question that I had though, and you may have answered it for me, was the sustainability of the cost after the five-year period. And so what I'm understanding, if you would clarify for me, we're going to use the bulk of this from the 4.1 from Senator Britt. And then should we see after that point, or if we exhaust that, should we see that in subsequent budgets later?
Yes.
To his point, yes. I think what you'll see is communication from us mostly. Look, when we apply for grants, we have to come to you anyway. So you'll know in real time when we're going after these grants, whether they're on the competitive end or just available end. You'll know if we get it or don't get it. Ideal world, we get it, but if we don't get it, you know, the team has already been given a directive plan for contingencies. What can we manage out of our general fund budget spreading that costs out over time and then yearly?
Okay, and what is before us? Is this considered to be a basic need at this time or do we have any opportunity for growth? Because obviously we see that this will be a great impact on increasing safety.
I actually think we should allow the police chief to answer that question. I think what, I think what started, come on up, Chief Pickett, can you repeat the question for me?
Yes, what I basically just wanted to see, do we have any opportunity for growth? How do you feel that this impacts the safety and the quality? Will we be able to, will we probably see more requests? Are you just basing this on the current amount of money that we have or that we know that we have to spend on this?
Yes, ma'am. You mean more requests for additional cameras?
Yes.
I'm going to be honest with you, yes. And the reason for that is the more cameras a city has, the more eyes you have, the safer it will be. The more tools we will have in law enforcement to narrow down the specific times that a crime was committed, things of that nature. So, yes, in the future, we will request more. Just as we always request, you know, more improved, better equipment. Of course, you know, with any type of technology with cameras, they improve over the course of three to five years. So we will be asking, you know, in the future for more. But I think that, you know, with us doing well and what we've done so far this year, I think cameras will only enhance our ability to solve crimes, not just violent crimes, but crimes of theft, you know, and, you know, just across the board. So, yes, and sure, yes, we will ask for more.
And there was one other question regarding the type of cameras. I think we had a question last week about Flock versus the other types. And so could you give us just an idea of the rundown? I know we've got the list of cameras here, but the technology that we're using, are we seeing any improvements or is it based on cost or capability?
So we want to tailor our deployment of the cameras specific to the area and what we're trying to pick up. So certain cameras have certain capabilities and certain areas we're looking to identify a licensed plate, for example. Well, different cameras are, they pick up more optimally based on the speed of the vehicle. So that's why we make a decision between, you know, either a Flock or a Genetec camera based on it being able to have the most clearest, the most clear picture of the license plate or and description of the vehicle. In other areas, we may not so much need to look for vehicles, but we'll have like a 360-degree camera that's identifying what a person is doing and good clothing descriptions and things of that nature.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Mr. President, to Madam Pro Tim's first point, I think it's to be of note, the way we are approaching this public safety, particularly as it relates to technology, speaking with counterparts in other cities, we're going to have to approach this conversation honestly yearly from a public-private partnership. There'll never be enough public tax dollars to absorb this type of costs. But what we've seen in other cities, particularly from their foundations, so you know, there've been several recommendations from the, from the crime commission report. Couple with benchmarking other cities, Atlanta's, Atlanta's Police Foundation is an example. What you have at the table is beyond Alabama Power being an operational partner. You have corporate partners, business communities, small business owners, et cetera, engaged through that city's police foundation to support public safety enhancements. One of those enhancements includes how to support technology. It doesn't always have to be new cameras necessarily on poles. You know, we already started and you all have been in, lost count of how many public meetings, town hall meetings, neighborhood meetings we've talked about connect Birmingham. So it's enhancing that with dollars, if that makes sense, through a public-private partnership. So it doesn't stop, it goes beyond trying to compete for federal grants. And it goes beyond engaging Alabama Power. This is a conversation we'll continue to have with corporate Birmingham, small business Birmingham. As we build up our foundation, how do, this is the way we want you at the table, particularly around building out our technol, our public safety technology infrastructure.
Councilor Clark?
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, I do know that, you know, this technology helped recover my car really quickly when it was stolen. Once I was able to get you and the police chief my tag number, which I actually didn't know. And we were able to activate OnStar because I hadn't had the car a week when it was stolen. So anyway, it was really fast recovery. It just kind of blew my mind because the car had been passed in the cameras, but they hadn't put my tag number in for it to pick it up. But, you know, I feel like, you know, using technology is really important. This is very expensive. And so the sticker shock and the speed, you know, is probably why we're here. But, you know, I do think we're going to have to do more of this and that, you know, you can't really put a price on public safety, really. But, but is this a sole source situation? Or is there a way to get competition in this process, in this procurement? Or not really, because we would still have to have a poll use agreement with?
So the, and I may have to lean on Alabama Power for this. So this technically not sole source, but it falls under the public safety. What is it, Attorney Stanley?
Yeah, there's an exception to the bid law for equipment used for surveillance, security plans, procedures, assessments, and other measures or systems.
And so it's just the easiest way for us to go ahead and get it installed is to go through Alabama Power because they have the polls, they have the equipment, and then we're able to negotiate that price with them of the whole service. So, yeah, to your point, yeah, the equipment does get outdated, but that's part of the whole maintenance agreement that we have with them is that for the terms of the actual agreement, they will monitor the cameras to make sure they're upgraded and viable for the use of BPD.
Okay. Okay, that's fine. So this seems so loud. I feel like I'm shouting. It can hear me breathe. It could hear me think. Okay, so in terms of expansion, I guess to Council Alexander's question, you know, are we getting, is this an optimal expansion or this is just what we can afford right now? Or what does it look like? Can they move around to be more strategically placed?
Yeah, so I'll answer your last question first. So yes, these, these cameras can be moved around based off of recommendations from BPD to Alabama Power. The first part of the question, yes, we are doing this as a phased approach. So what's before you is the second phase of the expansion. There is a one, a third one that we're currently working on. And of course, that will have a dollar amount attached to it. But once we kind of solidify that, because we're going to be working with ALDOT on their right of ways with that expansion program, then we have to sit here and figure out the cost of it, especially for the future of the program. So, yeah, we, we look at it as a phased approach.
Okay, my final question is, do they do this for a lot of other municipalities so that there's a group, some group purchasing advantages on the unit prices?
Yes.
Of the equipment?
I can speak for that, ma'am.
So we actually work with over 80 municipalities across the state. So not only do we work with municipalities, we also work with homeowners associations, housing authorities. So, yes, we do have bulk pricing that we get discounts from.
And you pass that on to your municipal clients?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Without, without giving a number, I can tell you it's a significant number. Their relationship with the housing authority of Birmingham District has totally, totally, totally decreased crimes against persons and crimes against property in our public housing sites combined. It's, it's been a fundamental game changer. And so, of course, you know, I think it's 13, 14 of those sites spread out. But just imagine us continuing to build out in phases what we can do citywide for this program. It's transformational. As you said, you can't put a cost on it. We should know though, right? Like managing our expectations. Two things will happen. As time goes, equipment costs become more expensive. As well as time goes, equipment becomes outdated and we have to upgrade, which is also expensive. So there will be, it may not be a sticker shock every time, but it'll be some form of shock. The level of that shock, I don't know, but this is not cheap. This is not inexpensive. It has shown extreme amount of positive results and we know it's worth it. Not just for crimes against property, but particularly crimes against persons.
Mr. Mayor, one thing that would be helpful, just in terms of being able to understand, you know, the $2 million a year basically price tag would be if the one-pager that they've given us, the bulleted list, if there could be, that we, if we could get basically a dollar value for each one of those bullet points, that would help us to understand, you know, all of the different components and how much it costs.
Let me not to commit to something that I don't know if we can or cannot do. If you can just hold one second. If you, let me answer, let me answer the question first by saying yes. Now, putting a timestamp on that, if we can be a little patient and let them get in the lab and tell us what that is, because we don't know, but they will. And submit it up to us so we can share it with you.
Yeah, I mean, I think most of us probably have no idea how much it, you know, costs to put a pole in the ground or, you know, any of the other things that are here. Just so, you know, having a little bit more information will help us basically understand the math. So. All right, Councilor Tate?
Thank you, Mr. President. I know, Mayor, you guys touched on this and I think Madam Pro Tim may have asked this. Where are we? I know we got connected. Like where are we like today, like engaging or are people, just more people engaging in using Connect to connect?
So Connect Y'all is nowhere where we wanted to be.
Okay.
Okay, it is, it is sorely underused. We'll take ownership of that. I think we're going to have to figure out different ways to engage different stakeholder groups. You know, I'm saying this, and Chief's probably going to hear this for the first time, but literally breaking out various town hall, town hall style group meetings. So for example, having a public safety town hall meeting just for small business owners. Right? We may have to do two because everybody has different hours, right? But the whole idea is getting them aware of that program, you know? Your president and I have talked about this. It's for individual versus a business is different. There's a setup fee, all the type of stuff. But again, this is where the foundation comes in handy, right? So there, there are ways we can engage this conversation more layered, deeper and specialize, if you would. I'm going to use the term specialized, but more coordinated, targeted groups to engage. The town hall meeting, that's, we ask the question, how many of y'all have cameras? Two-thirds of the room raised their hand and then not even in 30 days, anybody in the room signs up. So we're going to have to figure out a way to engage differently.
Okay, and finally, dumping, like does it, I know Councilor Abbott asks about the speeding and all of that things, but I, you know, we, you and I both know that we've had some success with, you know, cameras catching people dumping and it has them fanned out very well for them. So really appreciate that, but, you know, with these cameras, you know, pick up people that are doing illegal dumping in communities.
Yeah, so this is just going to be more helpful. I mean, you've seen the results of what we've been able to do with, with the technology usage of catching those committing that form of crime in our city. This is definitely going to increase that opportunity to catch more people. I can guarantee that. That's not a moving violation.
Pro Tim Alexander?
Yes, just to piggyback on Councilor Tate's thoughts and you're saying the town hall concept of, and targeting the audience of the town hall, I would like to ask that we also think about churches because we were able just by word of mouth with one church in West Brownsville, they have cameras that were directly centered on a huge, terrible dumping site. And it was just the word of mouth and thinking that we'd inquire to the church if they, they might want to log into that or allow them to be with part of the Birmingham Connect. And it stopped. So I don't know who was doing the dumping, but they heard about that conversation. So if you could increase that, that would be great.
Great idea.
Councilor Smithman?
Thank you, Mr. President. Was this the only company or vendor we reached out to?
For what's in front of you, yes. And I will tell you why. It's a very simple reason. We already had the relationship. We already had a contractual agreement. What's before you is an amended agreement to add on to what already existed. That's why we engaged it.
So there was like a cost analysis between going with possibly another vendor, like another county sheriff's office? I think it was mentioned uses a different camera company.
You know, I'm a straight shooter, counselor. I don't necessarily think there was a, what's the word you use? Cost what?
Cost analysis.
I doubt there was a cost analysis. What I will say again is that they got in the lab and they went back and forth for a considerable amount of time. Chaz was in several of those meetings, including the ones where they talked about costs before it routed all the way back up to our office, grants and finance related to that grant from Senator Britt's office. That's now presented, presented before you the costs. And I think he may give you some context.
Yes, so as it relates to the LPRs and the Flock cameras, so it actually works out to our benefit to, to, to get the service from Alabama Power because over the course of two years, we'll save about $200,000. Then additionally, that cost will be locked in for five years, whereas with Flock, you have to renew the contract every two years. And there's an opportunity for it to be increased, the charges to be increased on that. So that locks us into the price that we're at as well as we have the occurrence of one incident. If the camera has some issue or it breaks or something of that nature, Alabama Power will service it for that first one incident where Flock would not. So it's some things that we're factoring in.
Okay, that's helpful to know. And, Mr. Mayor, do you think this will help with maybe some of the requests from residents that want more cameras around the neighborhoods?
100%. Look, Ms. Alice Williams and Ms. Alicia Lumpkin will still engage the neighborhood level, the partnership with neighborhood funds, City of Birmingham, certain type of cameras that are not these that we can place in various places to. certain type of cameras that are not these that we can place in various places to catch those illegally dumping, littering, et cetera. That's not gonna stop still walking it out. Um, but this enhances that, right? So this enhances everything. It enhances um, you know, the criminal element as it relates to felony or misdemeanor, whether it's crimes against persons or crimes against property. Then what you're speaking to, I know exactly what you're talking about, the things the neighborhood folk care about when they drive out of the neighborhood, when they come back into the neighborhood, what they see, catch those who would be doing those things. At minimum, who's driving in, even if it's not on that particular street, right?
Yeah.
We get a certain car description, certain date. This helps within us to investigate those things. It brings some relief to the requests the residents have as far as things being committed in their neighborhood, whether it's somebody in the who lives there or somebody bringing it in.
Okay, good, because I know what um Safe, was it Safe Streets? It's like that's what it's called. I know it was very successful because you were able to put out more cameras. And I know I've been hearing that, not just in neighborhoods, just constituents in general. So I'm really happy to be able to tell them um this will go out. But I think we also need to remind people we can't tell them where they are, because then people will shoot them out. So I think that's something we also need to remind people when they ask where are the cameras?
Yeah, I think they should, I think they should just be encouraged um that this second phase, this continued partnership with Alabama Power, um engaging public safety from our building on our technology, additional eyes um in our neighborhoods, in our thoroughfares to keep people safe.
Yes, and if y'all mind, I'll tell Chief, I think he is doing a good job. Um, I do walk downtown by myself with my dog, and it has a different feel to it. Um, and that matters. And whether it's by River Park or by our office, I really want to say thank you for everything you've done the last few months.
Counselor Abbott?
Just one more question. Um, what kind of statistics are we keeping on the camera's contribution to crime resolution? Because I know the cameras don't reach out and grab anybody when they go by, but...
So Chief, so Chief Pickett, um, Mr. President, to Ms. Abbott's question, he will never come before you and tell you, you know, in the detail, this this, from this investigation, with the use of these cameras, it allowed this results. But what I can tell you is um from our Investigative Bureau standpoint, investigating crimes against persons and crimes against property, um, Council Clark is an example of when she tells her a car was stolen, the ability to use the license plate readers, picked up once we had the tag number, boom, found her car. Again, he's gonna probably be hesitant on what he publicly says about how they've been helpful. But particularly our ability, we're at eighty-one percent clearance rate on our homicides this year. But I think without a doubt, um, there's a testament to um technology being used to investigate crimes against persons, not just homicides, assaults, and other forms of crimes against persons, definitely crimes against property, uh vehicular theft and other forms of crime as well. Um, what did I miss without you being able to go into the detail of investigations?
You know, just the simple fact that um I was having this tool. As we all know, uh, as I mentioned it originally with with uh some initiatives that I was rolling out with the Eight Point Crime Plan, criminals, whether they're stealing things or whether they're uh hurting people through violence, typically they're gonna utilize a vehicle at some point. We know that when they commit a crime, they're gonna at least move from that location uh at some point. And the more cameras that we have just built out throughout the infrastructure of our city in all neighborhoods and in our high traffic areas is is gonna do wonders for assisting law enforcement in addressing crimes and holding people accountable for doing those things. So uh the cameras are hugely impactful to assist us and to deter crime.
Well, yeah, and and I wasn't asking for details. I was thinking um more of the cameras have assisted in us resolving cases. Sixty-seven theft of property, a hundred and fifty-nine, something else.
So we're definitely more data driven at this point uh under my leadership. We will track, to your point, we will track those things, and we'll do assessments internally. And that's for maybe repositioning or replacing the cameras as it relates to location. Uh, the types of cameras, we may need to make an adjustment with that as well. So we'll do an ongoing assessment to see how beneficial is this investment? Because I know that's what you're getting down to. Uh, and then also, how can we make it better and use it more efficiently?
Yeah, well, and because residents, of course, ask questions, I always like to have answers. I hate to say I don't know, because then I have to get with Chaz and his to tell me the details, and I wear him out. So, you know, i- it's just that residents that we meet on a daily basis while we're out and about, they have all kinds of questions, and it would be nice to be able to justify ten million dollars, because even though we're using grants right now, the federal government is a hot mess. And they may not give us any more, Graham, you know, who knows what they're going to do to to everyone? So my thought is that, you know, if it's, if they're successful, we need to be doing some good justification of why we're spending ten million dollars, because we might have to come up with it on our own instead of having...
Yes, ma'am.
And it's not that grants are free money, I mean, they're tax money too, but people don't feel them as much if it's not local.
That's a great point, and we'll we'll make sure we're tracking that data, so...
So just so we can, there's, you know, prove that they're working and that they're helping. I know they are, but the average citizen, you know, they don't, sometimes don't even know which district they live in.
Yes, ma'am.
So...
Um, so just along to that point, um, you know, of course, cameras are um a deterrent, and, you know, it, we hope that in the wake of a crime, um, that that they collect evidence that helps takes criminals off the street. But just thinking about, you know, the return on investment, um, I used to have a uh document posted on my office door that talked about um the cost of of homicides. And I don't I don't remember, you know, the exact dollar figure, but um when you start totaling up the cost, you know, it's, you know, well over a million dollars for for homicide, you know, you know, given all the different factors. So, you know, you think about taking those criminals off the street and and preventing um future incidents, you know, that's that's, I think, is where the payback is.
And one last, one last little thing, Mr. Mayor. First Amendment documents, your name isn't spelled. I thought you'd wanna fix that.
I I just appreciate you. Uh, thank you, thank you so much.
Counselor Moore?
No, she don't spell check so much. Um, I just think that, you know, um, first thing first, I I do want to say thank you uh for you all taking the time to to be here uh and explain and answer questions. Um, and, you know, I'm I'm pretty sure everybody is, you know, appreciative of the public-private partnership that we have uh with this, uh and all the benefits that it'll bring about. Um, I did want to, you know, just get clarity on something, because I know last, last week, you all shared that, you know, any damages uh that, you know, came to the cameras would be able to be serviced by Alabama Power. Um, and then today, it was, uh, I think it was made mention that, you know, it's just the first time something happens to the camera, or um is that, will that be like ongoing?
So up to ten thousand dollars.
Okay.
So acts of vandalism are covered the first time.
Got you.
Regardless of what the vandalism was. Now, maintenance, if a camera's down the whole time, we're fixing it. So that's part of that service agreement. At the whole time of that five years, you will have working cameras. So, yeah, so the the part of replacing is actually just on vandalism. So if we have an act of vandalism, which luckily, we haven't had that many. Um, so the city of Birmingham, we've had cameras now for six years up with you guys, and we haven't had one yet.
Awesome.
So we've had one, no, two now with Birmingham Housing Authority. We've had one down um in South Alabama. We don't have that happen that often, but if it does happen, you are covered by that.
Got you, okay, thank you.
Okay. So I think we've exhausted our questions here, so this this item will be on the council agenda tomorrow um for consideration. That's all we got. All right, so under our new and old business, uh, Mr. Mayor? Good.
Look, again, good morning. Uh, I I requested some additional information. I'm I'm gonna start with this. I'm extremely sensitive to this body. When there's a request from us to add something as um as an addendum to your agenda, I have readers on this day, as you all like to process information, you don't want anything forced upon you. Um, and we all deserve transparency. So every now and then, when I do request that, I I wanna, one, you taught me something last week, go through detail, and there's an opportunity where I have you, like this is just get into the why and answer any questions or concerns you may have. Um, because when I do bring something for you from the denim, it's usually an urgent situation or what I'm about to talk to you about, I think it satisfies emergency situation. We um, we came in end of twenty seventeen, and we ramped up really, really aggressively on eighteen and nineteen. And we removed so many blighted problems, we've got this other problem that's really extremely hard to manage, and we will never be able to manage by ourselves. Ourselves is defined as with city public tax dollars. And I'm referring to weed abatement, overgrown lots, where the majority of them are private property. We find ourselves in a very unique situation, summer twenty twenty-five, that we have have not been in the last eight years. Usually, we're in a position to be able to deploy the monies you approve for weed abatement pretty much over a year's time. And there's a process, you vote on it almost weekly, you mentioned it last week, where we have to get out uh supporting um your approval um for the city to go through a process to get to your vote, then to go back to finance purchasing legal for private contractors to go on these private lots and cut with the monies you set aside. We found ourselves extremely um challenged this summer due to all the rain in May, due to all the rain in June combined. Uh, each of these, in both months, I've been before you and I've expressed the situation. The situation is not the same in all nine districts. And so in districts one, half of two, uh, half of three, you don't have the problem at the scale of four, and six, and seven, and eight, and nine. It does exist. I can, I can point out one in three right now on Moncler. I can point out one in, one, I don't remember the name of the street. It does exist, and it exists in two as well, but not at the rate. In some of these other districts, I have a combination of whether it's the next generation just did not take care of the property, uh, whether there wasn't a will or something of that nature, and it's it's air property that just refused to be taken care of, whether it's a absentee owner that lives in another state now and doesn't have a power attorney locally, so they just wash their hands with it. Whatever the reasons are, this issue, this problem, has to be addressed in a different way. So I want to first explain a different way we are going about tackling it, putting everybody together. So we're taking the public works crews and dividing them into certain sections of town, southwest and west and east, and I think one north as well. And then we're augmenting that with the combination of the land bank, they have their own uh money for contractors. Then PEP, uh, which is what the majority of that two point seven from last year's budget ended June thirtieth, and it's three million dollars. At some point, we're contracting, and Chaz is gonna help me out. Gonna do something different with our parks, so we can take that manpower and their equipment and add on to this. And am I missing any group besides PEP, private contractors, public works, land bank, and parking brake? Is there anybody else?
That's it.
They are going to pretty much descend on the area as a group. So if I'm correct, for example, the south team today is working on finishing up Mason City, and then as a group, they will move to Hawksmoor. West is working, finishing up Jones Valley, and then they will move to Powderly. Every day, they will be in a different area. Again, this is the combination of PEP, the contractors, the land bank, and all the other, the groups I didn't name. Why am I talking about this now? There is a process to get before you, right? We go out into the yard, we take the sticks, we put the sign on the stick that says, we came out such and such date, if you don't take care of your property, you have to appear before the council on such and such date. All of those different windows add on to the time to get to these lots. We wanted to find a way to expedite the three million dollars out the door to additional contractors. One is because we're behind. Two is because I don't have to tell anybody on this day, is we have a senior elder population that is pretty much higher than most cities in the state of Alabama. You get the calls, you get the texts, you get the emails, you get the complaints, you get the grievances. That too many of them are living next to these lots that are overly high, that can cause issues. This is, and this is where we talk with the legal department to say, well, can we declare an emergency wholesale? The answer is yes, uh, due to health and safety, whether it's snakes and rodents, um, anything of that nature. The third is, now that we have this plan, we feel we can expedite it, if we can declare more wholesale and get the resources out. The short version is this, you know this because you say it on this day, it's loud enough for us to have heard it for the last three and a half years, so we're gonna repeat it. There will never be enough public tax dollars to go and cut every private lot in the city of Birmingham. I repeat, there will never be enough public tax dollars to go on every private lot. It's, it's, it's not financially possible. I mean, it's not, that's not our job. I needed to just say it, this is not our job. However, with the resources we have of the two point seven five that ended June thirtieth, of the three million that you all just voted on, that went into effect six days ago, this is a problem. It is a bad problem, and it is a problem that I think um has reached an emergency issue. It requires us to move with the, a more expedited sense of urgency to address these lots, particularly next to our seniors, and we gotta do it in a faster way. Ms. King should have sent you all an email explaining some of this, and she should have also explained the law around the emergency use. Of course, this is not permanent, of course, we can't be abusive and do this every year, uh, but the last two months kicked our butts, and we are behind. That's what's before you as an addendum. If that does not work for this body, you need more time, I will tell them to take it off and put it on regular next week. But the faster we can get to this, the faster we can move on getting some of these lots cut. So I didn't want you to just see that tomorrow, or if there's not the appetite for it, we can talk about it now with the remaining time we have.
Smithman?
Good morning, I want to say thank you, thank you.
Good morning. I want to say thank you, thank you, thank you, and thank you. Um, because I know I actually saw this in Council Tate's district last week. We have so many overgrown lots that are taller than I think all of us, that are next to actual residents. And so it becomes a public safety issue, and I know we have a process, but I'm so thankful, because how do you explain to a resident that, oh, you have to go through a two, three month process, and you're having, what are they called? Gopher rats and snakes coming into your house? So I'm all for it. I think it's good. I mean, I know we have to go through the financial part and et cetera, but I think this is good for now until we can speed it up. I really want to say thank you, thank you, thank you for this. Seriously.
Councilwoman Abbott?
Yeah. So by declaring this an emergency, the legal requirements are waived, and we don't have to go through all that we normally go through when we go on private property to cut other people's grass.
It's gonna speed it up. So think, best analogy is to think, um, this is not one hundred percent analogous, but it's close, and I want to explain why. You have the twenty eleven storm comes to, it comes to Pratt City, it just, well, in the same vein, you know, the residents are like, yo, help. And we're telling them, help is on the way, but there's a process. Whether it's FEMA, whether it's the state, whether it's local, our own ordinances, it takes a while. Well, the administration at the time got, they got clever, which they needed to do this, is declare an emergency, and then allow to expedite the process to go on priv- for us using public tax dollars to go on private property, to remove some of that debris that needed to be removed at a faster rate. Ms. Abbott, I'm telling you, these empty lots, if you saw them with your own eyes, is bad enough. So that's literally what we need to do at this point. We need to find a way to get to them faster. Uh, expedite getting the money out of the door in like laser focus, particularly for our seniors and our elders who live next to them. That's really what, that's just the motivation to do it.
Well, believe it or not, I drive around in everybody else's districts all the time. I don't stay in mine, and I know what they look like. And it's mortifying to see a block with two houses left on it, where we've torn down everything else, and then it, they're just in a field of weeds. So I understand that. The cost is going to be paid. How? Are we gonna use up our money that we have allocated and then
Yeah, so-
we won't have anymore, and we'll have to find some?
I think, I want to, I would love to have this problem. And Chad's looking at me like, please don't say it. I would love to have the problem when we run out of money. That is the bottom line, Drew.
I don't blame you, Chad. I'm with you.
That's an actual, like, Chad definitely does not agree with that. And that's his job. He's not, he should not agree with that. But personally and professionally, I would love to have that problem. I'd love to be able to come to you and say, with this money, we've been able to cut these many lots in this short amount of time, we need to re-up. Do I think we can get three million dollars out the door in eight weeks? No. Am I gonna try really, really hard? Absolutely. One hundred percent. However many contractors we can get, if they gotta come from sixty miles out to get on our list, uh, we will take every contractor who's available. You, if they got one lawnmower, I mean, this is, this is serious no problem.
Okay. Well, I'm having to mow my grass once a week now instead of once every two or three weeks. I'm, I'm, and I'm not keeping up.
Well, so we gotta, that's another expectation to manage. No one should expect with your public tax dollars, whether it's one dollar or three million or three hundred million, that we can just keep going on private property with your public tax dollars to cut lots. That's not realistic. That's not feasible. That's not gonna happen. Again, what I have shared with two residents as late as this Saturday is, right now, the ten of us, if any of us speed, we get a ticket. We fail to pay our ticket, we fail to appear in court. There's a warrant for our, there's a bench warrant for our arrest for failure to appear. Everybody knows that. If you go to down the DMV to try to renew your license, or you go here to try to renew your license or your tag, what's gonna happen? You're gonna be flagged. And you won't be flagged just because you're trying to renew it. You're gonna be flagged because you didn't take care of your responsibility. President Quinn and I talked today, and the municipal lien foreclosure will be before you, your next committee of the whole. That's the good news. And this thinks, this young man right here who's been working on, he's smiling at you right now. Right? But I'm gonna say this. It's not enough. What I've just described, using the, the analogy of the failure to appear warrant, it is my belief. I, I don't want the city to foreclose on people's property and just take it. I don't think we should be in a business, like, we're having a hard enough time managing our own property. Right? We gotta take care of our own city right of way, our own city parks, our own city facilities. We gotta partner with the land bank. That in and of itself is a monster. So I don't want to, I don't want the city in the business of just taking people's property who don't do their responsibility. We will. But that's not the desire. The desire would be, if we go on your property, we cut your private property, we put a lien on your property. One, you owe us our money back, which you know we haven't been, it's been really hard to collect. But here's two. If you go try to renew your license, or whatever that is, you shouldn't be allowed until you pay the city back. Two things gonna happen with that. We're gonna recoup our money back. But it's gonna force people to start taking care of their responsibility. Right now, two things are happening. People are not doing their part, and they know we don't have the tools in the toolbox to hold them more accountable the way we want to and desire. And there's only one thing worse than that, which I have tried to figure out this out for the last seven and a half years. The residents are more mad at us than they are the private owner. Now, they should be mad at us if we don't go through the process of putting this investigating code enforcement, which you complained about, putting the stake in the yard, telling them you have to do this, giving them time, but we do that. You know who we, you know how you know we're doing it? It's because you're approving them weekly to the thousands. So we are doing our part. But it's not realistic for us to cut everyone up. This is not realistic. It's not humanly possible. It's not financially possible. And even if we can get to it once, it's not realistic that we can keep coming back on private property.
Okay, last question. You and I both have told people that they're responsible for cutting the right of way adjacent to their property. Some very smart person in the legal department told me that I've been saying that for twenty-three years, and it's wrong. That under Mayor Arrington, they did away with that part of the ordinance. I sent in a form to the legal department to get it fixed, so that the property owner was once again responsible for the right of way, and I've never heard anything back. They have a form you have to fill out. So to me, this is a big deal, because just in Five Points South, the business owners let the rights of way around their property get to be two feet tall. They don't do anything, because we don't make them, because we can't make them, because we don't have a law anymore. We don't have an ordinance. We need, we need to put that ordinance back.
So Attorney Stanley is taking the note. What's the question, so we can actually get it answered and addressed?
The question is, can we get a modification to our ordinance that requires property owners to maintain the right of way adjacent to the property they own?
So he took a note, but I wanna, I wanna double down with information. Can you or Dr. Lee send that to me in a text or email as well?
We can probably find the piece of paper and make a copy of it and fax it to you. I mean, there's a form. But anyway, we'll find it. It's been a long time.
Yes, ma'am.
And I have been lying to people all these years, thinking we still had an ordinance.
Well, you know, lies are ten. I don't think-
I mean, but it just, it, you know. Okay, so that was my last question.
Mr. President, I do want to exhaust any questions, concerns, issues you may have with this. If it's not the pleasure of this body, I'll pull it tomorrow.
Yeah, just to explain a little bit, just from my recollection, uh, call it institutional knowledge, um, I believe the issue with the asking prop- private property owners to maintain the public right of way um, was specifically related to sidewalks. Um, you know, which conceivably could be considerable expense. Um, so, you know, we may need, um, consider that and maybe just focus on the vegetation aspect of it, um.
And keeping the sidewalk clear. If you park your car on it, you're breaking two laws, but keeping rocks and trash and things off the sidewalk so other people don't fall over. And I'm not, I, I know we got away from people having to actually pour new concrete in front of their property if the sidewalk fell apart, but it's just keeping them neat. And cutting the grass. I mean, it's, anybody can buy a weed eater for fifty-nine ninety-five. You know, it's just not that, but, but they won't do it.
Yeah.
They expect the city workers, of which there are not enough, to cut all of the rights of way in the city of Birmingham, if we told them that was all they had to do. They're just, so we can't do it. It, it seems amazing to me that an adjacent property owner would not maintain the vegetation in the sidewalk as far as keeping it clean and clear. But look at the kind of people that are leaving all these lots overgrown. So we know that humans are just incorrigible.
Well, this is the alignment I think we can have with the council. We really need something changed in Montgomery that attaches bad behavior to their ability not to be able to renew something that's important. Because if, if it's, you know, well, what we see with our own eyes, it may be an unfair comparison, but what's worse, what we see with these lots, or failure to appear in court for running the stop sign? Right? You can't renew your license if you got a warrant because you didn't go to court for that stop sign. But you get to walk around and do whatever you want for not taking care of your property. Something's awful in that to me. Now, I know this is Alabama, and property owners have a lot of rights. But when are we gonna make a clear distinction between the property owner that does their part and the slum absentee owner who does not? And the city's left with the bag? And worse, the homeowner or the renter next door that's doing their part has to look at that every day or live next to it every day. That's not fair. So I need y'all help in getting our Jefferson County delegation, whether it's a local bill or a state bill, to help us attach that bad behavior to our ability not to be able to renew something uh, that they need to move in life. Tag, license, you name it, doesn't matter to me. I don't care. Something, though.
Councilwoman Clark, did you have a question?
Well, thank you, Mayor, for, you know, thinking outside of the box on this. And I do feel like we desperately need to, you know, manage the expectations of people. You already know that, because um, it's not just the cost and the scale that we're at now with it. It's the administrative burden too, because, you know, by the time we can assess a lien, the property may have changed hands two or three times or whatever. It's just, it's way out of control. And, and, um, throwing good money after the bad, because we can't service it to a level that makes a difference, because of the volume. So I like, I like the idea of being able to, you know, declare an emergency in this kinda, you know, extraordinary circumstance to be able to, you know, accelerate and be able to attack it, you know, at once and not inefficiently episodically all over town, but be able to go at it. I, I am a little bit nervous, though, about, you know, like, the person who's, I mean, I was on Highland Avenue this weekend, and I was looking at the native plants in the uh, median, and they all looked like the weeds in my backyard, you know, and I have a, a neighbor who did his whole front yard in native plants, and little boy stopped by all the time saying, sir, do you need help with your yard? Thinking he's just not tending the yard, but he's actually intentionally growing these weed-looking things. Okay, so there's that. And, and, you know, will we prioritize properties that are in the code enforcement queue, or that are, uh, repeat offenders? Cause I, I know there's a whole world of heirs' properties.
Yeah.
Uh, people who, you know, have ten or more owners, and none of them have real, you know, they all have an undivided interest, so it's not in their, it's not in one of the heirs' best interests to take responsibility, because they still don't own any more than the other heirs. So, I mean, we got a lot of that out there, and so we know the ones we're always having to do. I mean, so could there be some pecking order so that we're, you know, not putting ourselves at risk? Or at least mitigating some of the risk of just visually saying, okay?
Let me answer this twofold. One is I'm gonna owe you a deeper explanation on answering your question of, like, what's the actual, I mean, if you approve it, what's the actual process? I've given you a piece of it, right, where I'm telling you we're going into a particular area, and it's gonna be a super blitz. Within its blitz, it falls into only two categories. It's gonna fall into the ones you've already declared, that you literally already approved. And then it's gonna fall into the one that's on the emergency. Well, if I have a house here, and one falls on the list you've already approved, on the other end, it falls on the emergency. When we're in that block, street neighborhood, we're gonna take care of both. But you, you're owed a deeper explanation, because they've been in the room, and they're talking daily and weekly about how to adjust, adjust this. We're gonna already do the blitz without what we're asking you to approve. Uh, but it was still gonna be challenged. This allows it to free up a little bit more, just go ahead. As long as we can get more contractors, you should be able to see a difference, particularly within one area. Sometime, what we do, what we're doing now, we approve, we approve one house on the, one block, one empty lot on the street in this neighborhood, two empty lots on the street next to it, but then on the one street, you got ten or five. And so it looks like nothing's been done.
Yeah. So, so let me also ask you, I mean, I feel like this way, we do avoid a lot of that administrative burden that goes with this. Will we be trying to assess these people? Cause I feel like-
Oh, everybody getting, everybody's still getting a lien.
Everybody still gets a lien, but they didn't get an opportunity to cure it. Not saying they would have anyway. So I'm just, I was just thinking about that. Usually, we get a, you get a notice, you get a period to cure.
Let me do this.
Okay.
I'm not Ms. King, and I'm not Attorney Stanley.
Okay.
Ms. King has let this effort, let me withdraw what I said, and let the legal department speak on that question.
Yeah.
I think you should ask her that question tomorrow.
Okay.
If it's, if you want it on consent, ask it before. If not, just take it off. It doesn't matter, but well, it's an addendum.
I'm, I'm not sure how I feel about it, because the administrative burden of assessing the liens when, when our recovery is, is like, like a joke. And they're not getting a due process and an opportunity to cure themselves. Not saying they would have cured it anyway.
So then to your first point, we do believe, we do believe two things. On your already existing list that you all have approved, these are definitely a significant amount, minimum fifty percent repeat offenders. They already owe us, and they haven't paid us. The others would fall in the emergency, but I guarantee you, if we go through that, a significant amount of those at some point in the last decade or last five years, they've been assessed as well. So is there a loss? Honestly, no. Uh, what we're trying to solve for is the emergency issue. Again, this is not something we would do every year. But the two months of rain has put us in a really bad position where we gotta play some form of catch-up. And here's what, here's two things we know. We go through this emergency process now. At some point, their grass will grow back and too, they're either gonna do their part or not do their part, so we gotta still engage again.
I think we have to encourage people to try to keep it, you know, to get together on their blocks and try to keep it
Yeah.
Low. That's what we do on my block. Once, once y'all hit it, we try to keep it going as long as we can.
Mr. President.
And we chip in, we, um, you know, but the more lots you have, the harder that's gonna be in a block, but.
Well, I just wanted, Mr. President, I was just responding to her point that look, we tried to make the appeal. We will continue to try to make the appeal to being a good neighbor, helping that senior elder. My the one person with the long board with some of the stuff we see, not gonna cut. You're gonna have to get some professionals up in here. They're gonna have to take a bush and just come through first before you can do anything. That's how bad, that's how bad the rain for two months put us behind. Like, this is not, this is not ordinary. I don't, I don't think but for that rain, I think we would be in a different situation where, you know, starting in the March, being in April, we can manage this situation. This is not, this has been overwhelming because of the amount of rain dumped into our city, um, all of man, all of you.
Yeah.
And you know grass gets worse.
It does.
It does.
Yeah, and so, I, again, I'm saying, once you send a bush hog in and get it all, you know, leveled out, it's a good opportunity for people to try to keep that going so that their environment is managed longer. And I think uh, because of this council and ARPA funds, we have more opportunities with the Magic City Tool Bank, even though you have to go through your neighborhood association to get the tools. But the tools shouldn't be a barrier, you know, it'd be an opportunity for, you know, blocks to get together and access the tools for really low cost and, um, maybe even with neighborhood funds. And so I think we should somehow encourage people to keep that going, using new tools that we've made available to them.
I'm all for it. That's me. That's Community Pride one-on-one. This, this problem we're discussing, I've already made it clear, but it's rerepating. There's just, there will never be enough tax dollars to handle it on our home. But equally important, we gotta be honest with the use of public tax dollars. That's not our responsibility. Look, I get people, you get people, they complain about the street, the sidewalk, the alley, the lights. Now, I would rather pay, I would rather take the five million dollars, three in weed abatement to a demolition and put it in those things that we are responsible for versus these things that we are not responsible for, but residents are saying, please help us. That's, that's what we deal with every year. But we don't talk about it enough where the problem becomes overwhelming. People think it's only our responsibility, but it's not.
Uh, FYI, while we were sitting here, Chief Mitchell sent me a request for an addendum, um, to, for a, uh, basically weed abatement contract, so. Another.
Please.
Wanted to ask, you mentioned eight weeks. Is, we haven't seen a reso- an actual resolution yet. Uh, Attorney King just sent an email saying, hey, this is coming to you. Um, is there a date, an end date?
Yeah, Attorney Bernard is actually about to send to the, the entire council and the clerk's office, so for review. So she's sending that now.
Okay.
Yeah, please read over it. Take your time. We're not trying to rush it tomorrow. Ask those questions tomorrow. Like.
Okay.
Yeah. Can you, can you explain to them what we've done to the process of more contractors? Cause I think it's important that they know the A to Z of that as well.
Yeah, so basically, we, we're just trying to get more aggressive with the, the contracts that we'd had from the different RFPs. So we, we're actually going out and re-engaging those contractors that may have not been selected in our RFP process. But since there's now an emergency, we're trying to reactivate those vendors. Also with the one that's before the council, hopefully tomorrow, th- that vendor will be assigned to the parks. And so that, right there alone, will take our actual capacity of DPW off of the parks and put them in the actual communities to do cuts.
So the parks, it's important to all of us. I see your face. The whole idea is, you know, we know our challenges. We know our challenges with our manpower. We know our challenges with our equipment. We know our challenges with weather. You get those three things, what happens is you get behind in parks. We know what we're trying to do better to maintain our parks. We gotta keep the grass cutting in our parks. This contractual relationship with this vendor does two things. One, it takes those issues I just named and totally removes them from parks. Two, actually, it's three things. Two, it takes those, those resources and allow us to put them more on what we've just described as an add-on to Public Works and two PEP contractors. But third, this allows a single source to focus on the parks, keep them cut, keep them maintained. Anything else you wanna add to the parks before they have any questions? Cause I know they got questions.
Councilor Tate?
Oh, Jesus, I'm sorry. Thank you, Mayor. I just wanna thank you, uh, for this very aggressive move. I kinda wanna hit on something, uh, Councilor Clark says, it's really sad that, you know, we got this tool bank and really gotta figure out a plan of action, how to engage residents to take advantage, you know, of the tool bank. And then also doing this aggressive approach is list, you know, tell contractors to be mindful of not leaving the residue in the streets where it can wash down the drain, cause I see that a lot. And I saying this is our people, but I see that a lot with businesses. They're sending people to cut the grass and this stuff is just everywhere. And, um, and then I'mma ask another question. I know, how do we engage or what do we need to do to engage these residents? Like, I, we really need a, a alley blitz, like clean up these alleys, like, you know, I guess a lot of people don't think that what's behind your fence line belongs to you. And so you see a lot of that. I know I see a lot of that, you know, when I'm driving around, particularly in the, the north, north Birmingham district, like how do we, you know, do a sweep in the alleys, like one-time courtesy, but going forward, this is your responsibility.
So what I'm thinking, cause we have these same conversations. You know, we're ordering more trucks and more equipment. You know that. Russell, how are more drivers, we continue to do that? We really struggle with the education piece here. So what I found, um, I told one person this, uh, Saturday, Councilman Smith, and we really need to do the, uh, the community blitz with the door hangers, go out and talk to some of our residents who may not be English-speaking, that's one. So there is a serious education, education component to this. That's gonna require, that's gonna require literally leaf dropping. Uh, but talking to people too, especially if they're out. And it's not just the alley, it's what's going on in the front yard. It's a host of things. So that's gonna require some education. Um, and in certain neighborhoods where, um, there's been some demographic shifts, we have to acknowledge that people may just not know what our ordinances and laws are. So that's gonna require us to increase our education outreach, uh, which we've been talking to PEP and OPI, OPI about that. The other piece is the courtesy. I sent the message to, um, Public Works today. Spoke to a resident Saturday. She's complaining on stuff in her alley and I realized after a certain time, like, it didn't matter, right? It didn't matter if it was a tree on private property was cut by a private contractor and then they put it on our city right of way that they were supposed to haul off. She's like, why is it still sitting here? And even after I explained it, it didn't. There was no acceptance of not our responsibility. Really, really struggled with that, by the way. That's a whole nother topic. But yeah, we're working on the courtesy and then the education slash, here's the penalty, right? Um, alleys are a whole issue within herself. It's honestly gonna require more manpower where we probably have certain strike groups only focusing on alleys. But code enforcement have to come in before them, probably on the communication, education slash warning slash you have this window to rectify. I hope I answered your question.
Councilor Moore?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, so, Mr. Mayor, first off, I wanna say thank you. Um, but I do think I have to be that one, right? Uh, because just being real, like in, in districts like mine, I know D nine, you know, and several others, you know, um, when we go back to our neighborhood associations and talk to them and say, hey, this is the new plan forward, right? There are gonna be those that'll say, all right, well, why y'all ain't did that before, right? Uh, or those who say, well, since y'all are doing it now, I can already expect that there should be um, an opportunity for you to say that there's an emergency next time when we have all this rain, right? And so trying to just make sure that, you know, we really, uh, educate people uh, and, and communicate, you know, why we're having to take this action now. Um, and what they can expect from us in the future, because I think, you know, this moment will set a precedent, you know, for how we move forward. And I just wanna make sure that, you know, we are all mindful of how we need to do that. Um, I know that, you know, it was brought up before, well, I know I saw personally, um, you all did a really good job. You and your administration did a really good job, you know, with meeting with churches, you know, around public safety, having meetings with them about, you know, uh, what you all were doing in the community uh, to, to engage folks in, you know, the efforts around violence reduction. Um, I think, you know, that same effort should be put into, uh, this initiative as well. Uh, so that, you know, as we come out of this season, we can have somebody to, you know, kinda fill in the gap and, you know, service those folks that kinda help us on those different blocks that we need assistance with, right? Um, so that, you know, we don't have to find ourselves back in this space because we don't wanna have an emergency every year, right? Um, but we do wanna make sure that we kinda have some, some safety nets in, in folks that are in the community, um.
Can I, before you go, your second point, cause I wanna remember these points. You, you have multiple points in there.
I did, I did.
But they're really, really important to respond to before I forget.
Gotcha. Go ahead.
All right, Mr. President. One, I wanna try to be succinct and fast so you can get to your other point. I like the idea of an isolated town hall meeting. We've done this for stormwater. We've done this for public safety. We've done this for a few other issues. I like the whole notion of if you stay next to an empty lot, come to this meeting. So we can work on that. That's one. Here's two. I already forgot two.
Well, now, so the first one.
Oh, this is important. I'm sorry. You're talking about managing expectations of residents and answer the question, why now? Why now and when not? Well, global, global warming is real. I don't care what anybody says. It's a real thing and it's happening. And the city of Birmingham and other cities across our nation and our rural are experiencing it. We have never had rain in our city the way we had in June and May of twenty twenty-five. Two-thirds of May was rain, twenty-one out of thirty-one days. And if my math is correct, it was twenty-two days out of thirty in June. Now, again, we back out, we use our own self-defense example, whether you cut your own yard, you got a person you pay to cut your yard, you knew how your own grass looked in May and June. So now think about the empty lot that hadn't, doesn't have any treatment, doesn't have any work, doesn't have anybody, doesn't have any contractor. And it's set like that. And it's only getting this compounded because of time. And this is where the grass is now. So why now? It's literally, um, because of the significant amount of rain in our city that allowed us to not be in the position to cut for majority of eight weeks. Majority of eight weeks, two months, we were literally not able, uh, to cut. Contractors, if they could, were behind themselves. But even on our own property, our own city right of ways, our own city parks, we're behind. So that's why. Emergency situation? That's not realistic to do every year. We won't be abusive. I think this is a very unique situation.
Gotcha. And, and the last thing that I was gonna say is, I know that we're putting out an RFP to, um, a lot of these different vendors. Um, they do still have to have a city business license, correct?
Yeah, you can publicly explain the process. I imagine people are listening to this about
Right.
It's all gonna be that, why can't I get a contract?
Exactly. Cause I, I literally just last week had a meeting with somebody who was like, look, I got properties in my neighborhood. I wanna make sure that my neighborhood looks good. What do I need to do to better partner with the city to help in that, that regard?
Yeah, our, our RFP process is pretty succinct. It, it lays out a checklist that vendors must comply to in order to file or, or submit a proposal for RFP. So yes, you do have to have a, a city of Birmingham business license and uh, of course, some type of liability insurance because they are, you know, on, on private property. So like I said, that checklist, we can share that with the council, show them, show you what the application looks like, so you can share with other vendors to make sure they, they check in all the boxes before they submit, um, a proposal.
Now, that'd be perfect. Thank you.
All right. Anything else you wanna talk to, talk to us about, Mayor Woodson?
No.
All right.
Thank you all. Yeah.
Yeah, all right.